Welcome. Will you all please join me in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Note for the record that all council members are present.
Thank you. That brings us to the adoption of the agenda. There is...
I just have one suggestion, closing in memory of Jane Kinsler.
Okay. And also in support and sympathy for the San Bernardino tragedy shooting.
Second amendment.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And that brings us to oral communications, number one, which is the opportunity for members of the public to speak on an item not on the agenda. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak? I see two hands, so we will start with Michelle.
Michelle Sammon, Brisbane resident. I was not able to attend the meeting where you approved the rezoning of the Balmunters and Rogers property. I would just like to say that I was very, very disappointed that you did not require seeing the environmental report and the toxic report before making that decision. I still think that you should call for that before you approve any interim uses for that property at all. You really need to know the risk, the true risk that's there on that property. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Rick Viera. I've lived in Brisbane about thirty years, and I've been a smoker over forty years. In that time, I've learned a few things. Brisbane is a great town, and to be polite to other people. Our country was founded on tobacco.
This communications is for items not on the agenda.
Oops. Never mind.
This is about the smoking, then we'll get back to you in a little bit, once we've had our discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other members of the public who'd like to speak? Seeing no hands, we will move on to old business, which is to consider introduction of ordinance 602, enacting chapters 8.45 and 8.46 of the Brisbane Municipal Code to prohibit smoking of tobacco products and other products, including the use of e-cigarettes and smoking and vaping of medical marijuana in public places, businesses patronized by public and multi-unit residences, and to employees impose certain restrictions on the distribution and sale of tobacco products and e-cigarettes, and amending chapter 8.44 of the Brisbane Municipal Code to extend the city's existing tobacco retail permit requirements to electronic cigarette retailers. And staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. I would like to, at this point, I think, have Ms. Scruggs from the county come up and give a little background about what the county has done and some of the research. And then, when she's finished, I will go walk through parts of the staff report and talk about the ordinance before you and some of the changes that have been made since the council has last looked at the ordinance.
So you feel this is more appropriate to have her comments during the staff report?
Actually, some of her comments are really part of the staff report, just talking a bit about the background. I think then I will go through the rest of the staff report, and she may have some additional comments afterwards. But I do think it would be appropriate if the mayor is approving of that plan.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and fellow city council members. Again, I am Shonda Scruggs, Director of Tobacco Prevention for San Mateo County Health System. My presentation this evening is to add a little more information to some of the questions that were posed at the last meeting discussing this matter, as well as kind of recap a couple of points that we discussed. One of the things that was kind of the topic of discussion was, you know, did everyone understand and have the understanding about the secondhand smoke exposure? So I just wanted to restate... No, I'm here.
Yeah, our screens aren't on.
So I actually am going to... Shonda, did you have some of the just sort of background about the county? Otherwise, I think that perhaps the mayor's initial thought on this is absolutely right on, and we should go ahead, and I will go through the staff report, and we'll deal with the specific issues later.
You mean the county as in the county ordinance, or county as a whole and other policies?
So I think at this point, why don't we... I apologize for doing this, but why don't we... I will go forward with this part, and then we'll have Shonda come back to deal with some of the more specifics. I apologize for the confusion.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, the ordinance before you would make some changes in Brisbane. And I'm going to walk through... There are essentially eight things that this ordinance will do. This ordinance will ban the smoking of traditional tobacco products and other products in certain public places and businesses patronized by the public. It will also ban the use of electronic cigarettes and vaporizing of other substances in the same places. The ban will also... It will ban smoking in the common areas and in individual units of multi-unit residences. It will ban the use of e-cigarettes and vaporizing of other substances in common areas and individual units of multi-unit residences. It will apply to the smoking of marijuana and does not contain an exemption for smoking of medical marijuana in individual units of multi-unit residences. It will apply to the vaporizing of marijuana and does not contain an exemption for the vaporizing of medical marijuana in individual units of multi-unit residences. It will impose limited restrictions on the distribution and sale of tobacco products, including e-cigarettes, and will extend the city's existing tobacco retail permit requirements to electronic retailers. Since the council's last meeting, the Health and Safety Committee has met twice to take a look at the ordinance and consider the comments and the discussion of council at the last meeting. In response, the committee has made... requested that staff make a number of changes. The ordinance before you would... has been changed since the council last considered the smoking ordinance. It contains additional and updated findings, and those findings primarily deal with the health risks of electronic cigarette use, the health... I'm sorry, the health risks of secondary exposure to electronic cigarettes, asthma rates in San Mateo County, the number of states, municipalities, and other public entities and private organizations that restrict the use of electronic cigarettes, HUD policies urging owners and managers of HUD-assisted multifamily housing to adopt smoke-free policies on those properties to prevent secondhand smoke exposure, studies conducted about the distance required from an active smoker to prevent exposure to outdoor secondhand smoke, information about a trial court decision finding homeowners' association liable for damages for failing to adopt policies to prevent secondhand smoke from a condominium residence patio from entering another residence unit, and other types of local regulations that restrict certain activities at residences, even though those activities are permissible at other locations within the city. The ordinance clarifies that smoking is permitted on all public sidewalks that are adjacent to the public street. The ordinance before you makes the definition of enclosed internally consistent throughout the ordinance. That had not been the case before. The ordinance permits a landlord or a homeowner's association to designate as a smoking area a covered, unenclosed common area, like a carport, so long as the area is at least thirty feet from the doors, windows, or ventilation systems of all enclosed areas on the property, and enclosed areas on the property that facilitate physical activities such as playgrounds and swimming pools. The ordinance reduces the no-smoking sign requirements that apply to multi-unit residences by requiring those signs only at three different types of locations: on the outside of each enclosed building, but only if the building contains six or more individual units; at all enclosed common areas; and at all unenclosed common areas that facilitate physical activities such as playgrounds or swimming pools. All of these substantive changes are shown in redlined form in your materials. There are some additional amendments that are in the materials that were made by the city attorney that eliminate unnecessary provisions, clarify definitions, including making clear that single-family homes with attached or detached second units or in-law units are not multi-unit residences subject to the ordinance. Again, all of these are redlined in your materials. At the last meeting, the council had some questions, and the committee requested that staff do a little... get some answers for questions for council. One question was whether or not the ordinance could be amended to require, rather than simply permit, designation of smoking areas in multi-unit residences. The city may not require private property owners to permit smoking on their private property. State law expressly gives landlords the right to make their rental property smoke-free. And currently, without this legislation being passed, many homeowner associations and landlords choose to make their multi-unit residences entirely smoke-free. Smokers living or visiting such properties must leave the property to smoke. If adopted, the proposed ordinance would not alter this situation. Rather, the proposed ordinance would restrict the areas where landlords or homeowners may allow smoking or vaping, should they choose to allow smoking or vaping at all. Based on the recommendations of the committee, the ordinance has been amended to permit landlords and homeowners to designated covered but unenclosed common areas, as I discussed earlier. Additionally, raised based on concerns at the committee... I'm sorry, at the last council meeting, the committee asked staff to find out whether the county exempted medical marijuana from its ban on smoking and vaping in individual units because of legal concerns. I have called the county council's office. The county council's office reports that the county's decision to include the medical marijuana exemption was not made by the county council's office. It was a policy determination that was made after weighing a variety of policy factors. As the council's been advised before, there is no legal restriction on the council's ability to adopt an ordinance that bans smoking or vaporizing of medical marijuana. This is a policy decision for council. The committee continues to recommend that the council take a consistent approach with smoking and vaporizing of medical marijuana and not exempt medical marijuana from the ordinance. That is the end of the staff report on this. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. Or we can then turn to Ms. Scruggs.
Thank you.
I'd like some clarifications I could, Teresa. So if this ordinance is enacted, who would enforce it?
The first stages of enforcement really are more about education than enforcement. And the county has agreed to provide education for the city. The county provides that service to any of the cities if they want it, and the county would be there to provide that first level of enforcement by educating the community and by being there to explain what the ordinance requires to those who are calling to make complaints. Beyond the education stage, it would be...
Let me stop you there. How does that work? Ring, ring. Who's calling who? Probably Police Department? Is that right?
So I think it would be helpful, perhaps, for Ms. Scruggs to explain what they've done in other cities and what services the county is able to provide.
So Councilman Conway, in this instance, what would happen is we make our number available for residents in any of the cities to call our office, and so we would handle that as an educational matter initially. And if we cannot remedy the situation from that method, then it does get elevated to either the code enforcement officer or the police department in that jurisdiction.
Okay. So we would be the enforcers on that?
Yes.
That's my understanding from the county, that the other cities are really not getting very many phone calls beyond the education stage, that it's really just a small handful beyond the education stage.
But San Mateo County's ordinance has not... it's still in its initial stages, correct?
The county's ordinance has not taken effect with respect to the... Well, let's... I'm going to let the county answer that, but I believe with respect to the existing units in multi-unit residences. But the rest of the ordinance is in effect.
That is correct. So the full implementation of the county policy goes into effect in February. So there was a gradual grace period for existing and new units. So those who were in their unit at the time the ordinance passed, they had fourteen months before it was fully enforceable on them. So that will happen in February. There are other jurisdictions whose policies are already in force. Belmont, Daly City, Foster Cities goes into effect this month. Burlingame goes, I think, February or March of next year.
Okay, thank you. Did you have other questions for staff, Clark?
No, that's it. Right at the moment.
Any other questions for staff?
I do. So the way that the ordinance is written, Teresa, it's okay to smoke on sidewalks, correct?
It's okay to smoke on public sidewalks that are adjacent to the public street. Not all public sidewalks. So in other words, you know, the sidewalk that is within thirty feet of City Hall is a public sidewalk, and it's within thirty feet of City Hall. You would not be able to smoke on that, except that you would be able to smoke on the piece of it that is adjacent to the public street.
Okay. And so sidewalks that are around the schools, that would be permissible?
Sidewalks that are owned by the city?
Yes.
Yes, it would be.
Okay. And then you made a comment about landlords could allow smoking or vaping in regards to this ordinance. Is that an accurate statement?
So the existing law right now allows landlords to decide whether or not to permit smoking or vaping in multi-unit residents. If they choose to have a smoke-free policy, they can do so, and this law would not change that. So those landlords who decide that they don't want to allow smoking or vaping on their property can and do currently forbid it. And that means that residences and their guests would need to leave the premises entirely in order to smoke. This ordinance, the proposed ordinance, would not change that. What the proposed ordinance does is it limits the places that a landlord may allow residents and their guests to smoke. And it limits it to designated smoking areas, should the landlord decide to designate a smoking area.
Okay. And say there was a multi-unit building, everyone's a smoker. They all like smoking. They want to keep smoking. If this ordinance was enacted, they would, in a sense, not be following the law?
They would not be... It would not be lawful to smoke in their units or in any area other than a properly designated smoking area.
Even if they all agreed they want to smoke?
That is correct. The enforcement, of course, is by complaint. So if there's no one complaining, I don't think it would get in.
Yes. They'd still be breaking the law, so to speak. Okay. So then, in one of the whereas, you know, it talks about the long-term health effects of using electronic cigarettes is still unknown. So I think we're going to talk a little bit more about that this evening, in a little bit more detail. Or is this going to stay in the whereas, that we're still uncertain about the health risks?
The proposed ordinance in front of you is what would, if you adopt the ordinance as it's been proposed, is what it would look like. The whereas clauses do not get codified in the code, but that would be part of the ordinance that you adopt. The... E-cigarettes, and I believe that Ms. Scruggs can probably speak to this better, but it's my understanding that e-cigarettes just haven't been around long enough for the studies to determine what the long-term effects of the exposure is. What the evidence that we do have, and there is evidence in the ordinance, talks about the toxicity levels of what is coming out of the e-cigarette devices, what is in the e-cigarette devices and the studies that determine the toxins that are in there. But they just haven't been around long enough for the studies to be conducted on what happens long term.
Sure. Okay. All right. And the thing about the e-cigarettes, there's a variety of things that could be in them. Some could be steam, some could be, you know, some could have the harmful effects such as that are found in a cigarette.
So they're not regulated. There's no requirement that they need to list what's in them. And so it's difficult to tell what is in any particular e-cigarette. And I believe that the county representatives can talk a little bit more about the specifics of the studies and what they have found. But I think part of the difficulty is that they're not regulated.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I had one more question. I could... And maybe, Shonda, this is for you, but the county... Did they exempt these cigarettes, or it's included in their ordinance?
The county ordinance defines an electronic device as a tobacco product, so it is included and treated as traditional tobacco products.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
And on the complaints, would those need to come from a resident, or can they come from anyone who decides to make a complaint about smoking?
A complaint could come from anyone.
I have a follow-up question to Cliff's comment about, you know, what happens if all the people in one building decided it's okay to smoke. So in this staff report and in the ordinance itself, it mentions this California State Court decision about a homeowners' association being held liable for damages for failing to adopt smoking policies to prevent cigarette smoke from a condominium residence patio from entering another residence unit. So can you talk a little bit about that, and does that mean that even if there's no ordinance in place, there's still some potential liability based on that decision?
This was a trial court decision that held the homeowners' association liable for damages to a resident who ended up needing to move out because of health, pretty severe health concerns and issues with a child that was living in a neighboring in the unit. And damages were awarded to the family against the homeowners' association for failing to prevent the condominium neighbor from smoking on the patio and the secondhand smoke coming into the unit of the resident. Apparently, the resident had made a number of complaints, and it was never addressed. So the issue in terms of liability is there is at least one court that determined that a homeowner's association could be held for negligence, for failing to do something about this. I don't see it as a negligence issue for the city or a liability issue for the city. But at least there is at least one court that has determined that it would be negligent not to prevent a neighbor from allowing the secondhand smoke to come into a unit.
So as a follow-up to that, there is recourse even without our ordinance of a homeowner or a resident who has an issue with smoke to follow up with the landlord or the homeowners' association?
Well, this is not a published decision. This is a court of appeal decision. The case in...
I had one more question. I could, maybe, Shauna, this is for you, but did county, did county, did they exempt these cigarettes, or it's included in their ordinance?
The county ordinance defines an electronic device as a tobacco product, so it is included and treated as traditional tobacco products.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
And on the complaints, would those need to come from a resident, or can they come from anyone who decides to make a complaint about smoking?
A complaint could come from anyone.
I have a follow-up question to Cliff's comment about, you know, what happens if all the people in one building decided it's okay to smoke? So, in this staff report and in the ordinance itself, it mentions this California State Court decision about a homeowners' association being held liable for damages for failing to adopt smoking policies to prevent cigarette smoke from a condominium residence patio from entering another residence unit. So, can you talk a little bit about that, and does that mean that even if there's no ordinance in place, there's still some potential liability based on that decision?
This was a trial court decision that held the homeowners' association liable for damages to a resident who ended up needing to move out because of health, pretty severe health concerns and issues with a child that was living in a neighboring, in the unit. And damages were awarded to the family against the homeowners' association for failing to prevent the condominium neighbor from smoking on the patio and the second-hand smoke coming into the unit of the resident. Apparently, the resident had made a number of complaints, and it was never addressed. So, the issue in terms of liability is there is at least one court that determined that a homeowner's association could be held for negligence, for failing to do something about this. I don't see it as a negligence issue for the city, or a liability issue for the city, but at least, there is at least one court that has determined that it would be negligent not to prevent a neighbor from allowing the second-hand smoke to come into a unit.
Okay. Thank you.
So, as a follow-up to that, there is recourse even without our ordinance of a homeowner or a resident who has an issue with smoke to follow up with the landlord or the homeowners' association?
Well, this is not a published decision. This is a court of appeal decision. The case in fact wasn't appealed. It's a trial court decision. So, there's not a lot of law out there on this. Certainly, someone could bring an action, someone could bring an action and try. I don't know how successful each person would be in doing that, but at least there seems to be at least one court that thought the claim had merit.
Thank you.
No other questions at this time?
Anyone else with a question for staff at this point? Or should we open it up for the public comment?
Did Ms. Scruggs have, was she going to speak before the public, or, I guess, as part of the public?
She would have information if we wanted additional information. Did you want?
Yes, I was hoping that she would make whatever comment she was prepared to make before.
So, I will be very brief in my comments. The information that I provided was, again, to support the staff report and the additional information that was requested, and so I just wanted to put that in a different format so folks who may not have had time to read the extended whereas statements would have had some more information. So, last time, we did talk about how the scientific authorities view that there's no risk-free level of exposure to second-hand smoke, and that voluntary policies have not been shown to be effective in protecting non-smokers from smoke. So, one of the questions that came up was who regulated smoking on their properties in addition to jurisdictions that do these types of things? So, this is just a very brief snapshot of some corporations that have completely tobacco-free policies at their location for their staff, as well as anyone who is on their properties. When we think about the smoking prevalence throughout the state, San Mateo County has the second-lowest smoking prevalence in the state. We're estimated about 7.7%. Oftentimes, to be conservative, we'll say less than 10%, but the state will have us at 7.7. So, we know that the density of smokers varies from city to city, and we would expect that the largest density of smokers would be in the larger jurisdictions. But just using this figure, if we looked at 7.7% of the population of Brisbane, that'd be about 355 people who have the ability to impact the lives of the more than 4,000 that are non-smokers. So, just to kind of rehash about what electronic devices are, we know electronic smoking devices, they may be called e-cigs, e-huka, vape pens, electronic nicotine delivery devices, are battery-operated devices designed to deliver nicotine, flavor, and/or other substances through an aerosol inhale by the user, who is then called a vapor. So, early additions of these products, when the 2007, would have looked like traditional cigarettes, but over time, they have evolved to be quite modifiable, which means that what goes into them could be any number of combinations based on what the user places in them. The Food and Drug Administration has suggested that they may regulate these devices, but they have not yet done so. So, what they will tell users is that the potential risk of e-cigs is unknown. The levels of nicotines in them may or may not be as accurate as what's printed on the label, because, again, these devices are not regulated, the manufacturers are not required to disclose what's in these devices, and therefore, what comes out of these devices is also unknown. The pictures that you're seeing on the right are examples of these devices that have caused fires. In both of these instances, it would have been in a bedroom, for improper use of the device, or the device malfunctioning. So, in either case, it's not necessarily known, because, again, they're not required to disclose how these devices are manufactured or meet any safety standards. We've also seen quite a bit of articles here recently about folks who have been burned by the explosion of the devices, whether they've been in their pocket, in their hand, in their mouth, plugged to their laptop computer, or to their car. So, again, these devices are not required to meet any safety standards, and therefore, we've seen quite a bit of this in the news here lately. So, when the FDA and other researchers did look at what is coming out of the aerosol from these devices, again, because we don't know what goes in, we're not exactly sure what comes out, but they have found at least 10 chemicals on the Prop 65 list that have been found in these devices. Nicotine being the one that I think most people would recognize, but also lead and nickel. We know that the vapors or the aerosol from e-cigarettes actually contain more particles than traditional tobacco smoke. Now, a person standing next to someone who is using this device will absorb nicotine at a similar rate as if they're standing next to someone who's using a traditional cigarette. What we don't know in this case is the concentration of nicotine that may be coming out of that, so we cannot do an apple-to-apple comparison, because none of the devices are exactly the same. We do know that these devices emit volatile organic compounds, which are very small particles that can get deep into the respiratory system and cause respiratory distress. So, each of these devices that is highly modifiable has a liquid that a person could mix themselves, mix at a vape shop, buy online, and fill their device. And what national poison control centers have found is very, very sharp increase in the number of poisonings of children from drinking these liquids that they found in their home. So, in 2011, you're looking at a couple of hundred, but as of last year, you're looking at almost 4,000. So, we think about these liquids, they come in very small bottles, so we know that with the varying concentrations of device, of these liquids, less than a tablespoon could kill an adult or a child. So, we're talking about a very small amount of a highly concentrated liquid has the ability to kill the user or that user's child. So, we looked at the youth, use of these devices, they found that 11.4% of 7th graders have expressed indication that they've ever used this device. It's almost, it's like two-thirds higher than the actual rate of smokers in San Mateo County. When you look at 11th graders, you see that almost four times as many 11th graders will say that they have used electronic devices compared to a 7.7% smoking prevalence in the county. So, these devices are highly utilized by youth, and one of the reasons for that is they are seeing them in marketing. Traditional tobacco products, smoking, cigarettes, is prohibited from marketing on television, on billboards, or in areas that might be frequented by children. They're also prohibited from being, from using things that might appeal to children, specific colors, cartoon characters, and flavors. But you see, these restrictions on traditional tobacco products do not apply to electronic devices. So, it's very easy to see why youth might be appealed to these devices, and might feel that it would be fun or cool to use. So, I want to get back to the reason why this jurisdiction is considering, as well as many jurisdictions throughout the state, looking at prohibiting smoking in multi-unit residences. It's about a design of the building. So, I mentioned this before, so I'll very quickly click through this. There are multiple driving forces for the air in a building. You have temperature differential that will push air from the bottom of the building to the top. You have openings of windows that will push air from left to right, and also, if you have cracks and crevices in the building, so that would be the wind effect. And then you also have the heating and cooling system that will push air in many directions throughout a facility. So, in this instance, regardless of if this is apartment, a condominium, or even an office complex, when there are openings in the windows and the cracks and the crevices, as well as heating and beating, heating and cooling systems, the air is moved throughout that facility, and that something happening on one level could directly impact those on another level. So, when we think about multi-unit housing policies throughout the state, as of September, we had 69 jurisdictions in the state that regulated smoking in multi-unit residences. You will see that more than twice as many jurisdictions in the state regulate e-cigarettes to some degree, whether that is the sale or the use of these devices. So, some will say you need a retail license to sell these devices, others will say we treat them as traditional tobacco products, and you cannot use them anywhere you can't use traditional tobacco. So, here again, is a different set of organizations that treat electronic devices the same way they treat traditional tobacco products. Here in San Mateo County, you see the Call to San Mateo, Samtrans. Down in Santa Clara County, you see Stanford, we've got Yale, we've got Levi's Stadium. So, there is endless number of organizations, as well as jurisdictions, who have felt it necessary from a public health standpoint to treat electronic devices the same as traditional devices. So, here's a graphic of those in San Mateo County as it relates to e-cigs and multi-unit housing, that's what MUH is. So, the gold star is those that have electronic cigarette policies, and those with the black star are housing policies. The exception there is South San Francisco. Their treatment of electronic devices applies to their Grand Boulevard area, as well as their city facilities, including their city cars. If you thought about these policies alone, in these jurisdictions, that would cover more than half of the population in the county, if you consider all of the other tobacco-related policies throughout the county, it would cover a much substantial, more substantial population in the county. So, that is all that I wanted to share with you this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a question.
Oh.
Don't leave yet.
Yes.
So, you had two lists of different governmental and private entities. You said the first one had smoke-free policies.
Tobacco-free policies, yes.
Tobacco-free, and the second one had restrictions on e-cigarettes that were the same as traditional tobacco.
Correct.
So, that first list, how is that different from the second list, and do those companies regulate, or entities, regulate e-cigarettes?
So, sometimes there is overlap, so that wasn't an exhaustive list, and even when we pulled this information, we didn't anticipate it would be exhaustive. Sometimes it's easier to locate in corporate policies that they have a tobacco-free policy, and the interpretation for a lot of those is that they include e-cigarettes in that. If we could not find that language explicitly, we didn't consider that one. We wanted to make sure that it was very detailed, so the ones that very clearly stated electronic devices as well, those were the ones we looked at.
Okay. And did you look at which entities treat medical marijuana?
We did not.
Okay.
We did not.
Yes, so, you know, I'm struggling with the e-cigarettes, the vaping, and, so, we have all these products out there, and it's very difficult to study so many different products. I mean, it's kind of an infinite, you know, product, in a sense, things that you can put in these, in these devices. So, I mean, is that, is that part of the reason why the county decided to include the e-cigarettes with regular cigarettes, because it's just so difficult to, to be able to enforce that?
So, there's a couple of things. The first is the renormalization of smoking behaviors. So, early version of these devices looked very similar to traditional cigarettes, so from an enforcement standpoint, they would be indistinguishable. Then, when you look at the more than 7,500 different varieties that we found on the market, because we don't know what's going into them, we don't necessarily know what's coming out to them, it is from a public health standpoint and wanting to protect the bystander. And then you think about the exposure to children. So, because these devices are heavily marketed to children in ways that traditional tobacco products are not, the county felt it necessary to protect the children.
Okay. All right, so then, you know, the vaping, the, you know, the byproduct that's in the room, have there been studies that show that the byproduct of the e-cigarette is the same or similar to the smoke that's emitted from a cigarette?
They will have the same, some will have the same types of contaminants, but they're not uniform across the board. So, some will have formaldehyde, some will have lead, some will have nickel, some will have toluene, some will have nicotine, some might not have nicotine. So, it's kind of across the board, and because there are no federal standards for manufacturing or quality control, there's a lot that's unknown. So, in this instance, we are not seeking for jurisdictions to consider policies like this to protect the user, because the user is doing so at their own risk. We are thinking about a person who might be a bystander who doesn't want to assume that risk.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a question? Any other questions for Ms. Schrempf?
Thank you.
So, I think we should get some public comment, and I'll start with this now. So, I have Annette Salgado. Come on up, if you can. There we go. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Annette Salgado, and I am a sophomore at South San Francisco High School and resident of San Mateo County. I am a member of youth organizing San Mateo County, a program housed under the Youth Leadership Institute. As part of Project CASA, a campaign dedicated to ban second-hand smoke from the multi-unit homes, I have learned about the impacts and possible solutions to solve this issue. I think San Mateo County should prohibit second-hand smoking in multi-unit housing. This personally affects me, because I live in a multi-unit house. There are many factors that contribute to why people smoke, but I think it is important to think about those who are impacted, not just adults, but kids, babies, and their pets. Some people in my building don't realize that the ventilation system is connected to all of the other apartments, and when they smoke, that smoke is affecting more than just one person. I'm doing something about this by learning about the effects of second-hand smoke and advocating for community change, and I ask you to join me in these efforts. Lastly, it is important to not just have smoke-free apartments, but also include condos, townhomes, and duplexes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe you have a copy of this letter in the record. The subject of the ordinance today, Tobacco Product Sales, Uses, Restrictions, and Prohibitions. I want to thank the City Council for taking the time and investing the money to write this new ordinance for the purpose of educating and protecting our citizens' right to breathe clean air. By passing this ordinance tonight, Brisbane will become the 19th of 20 San Mateo County cities to acknowledge its responsibility to protect its non-smoking citizens of all ages and medical conditions from the proven harmful health impacts of smoke pollution in their presence. The evidence presented clearly supports prohibiting smoke from tobacco products, e-cigarettes, and medical marijuana within multi-unit residential buildings. I hope you all agree and have the moral strength to approve this ordinance in its strictest form now. I really don't see how anyone can object to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Vera?
Should I start all over, or go from where I was? I've lived in Brisbane almost 30 years. I've been a smoker over 40 years. In that time, I've learned a lot of things. Brisbane is a great town, and to be polite to other people. Our country was founded on tobacco. I grew up with two smoking parents. Back then, you could smoke anywhere, which isn't really right, but that's the way it was. We've come a long way. Restaurants, smoke-free, that's fine. Smokers are a dying breed, no pun intended. We know that. Eight out of 10 smokers will put out their cigarette if someone complains. The others don't care. That's just human nature. Menlo Park or Palo Alto have no smoking laws, even in your own car. My dad fought World War II to keep this country free. He would roll over in his grave to see this. Does Russia have more freedom than California? We all have rights, but this is past. What's next? No blue shirts on Wednesday? Can't eat chicken on Friday? It's America, people. Wake up. Do we really need Brisbane PD to go out on felony cigarette calls? Bam, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. You're getting, yeah.
Yeah, I was told to do this, and I forgot. Okay. Good evening. My name is Denise Escavias, and I am a senior at South San Francisco High School and lifelong resident of San Mateo County. As part of the Youth Leadership Institute and member of Project CASA, I have learned how families specifically living in multi-unit housing are exposed to second-hand smoke on the daily. I would like to address the issue of second-hand smoking in multi-unit households. Everyone can understand that smoking is not healthy, but there is still so much to do about it. I realize this is happening at apartment complexes I live in. My dad is a smoker, and he has tried to quit many times, and I know I am not the only one who experiences this. Therefore, I am hoping you can support me making a change about this, not only in my home, but also in my community. I am beginning to understand the different factors contributing to second-hand smoke. I am also learning how to articulate to my, to my dad that smoking not only affects him and his health, it also affects my mom, my younger sisters, neighbors, and myself. I want to help him and my community realize that youths are at higher risk of smoking if I am exposed to second-hand smoke. Additionally, as you're considering this ordinance, it is important to consider e-cigarettes and the definition of tobacco. And I would also like to add something, seeing all this happening right now, I mean, it's my first time, but I see that there's a lot of confusion with e-cigarettes, but as a youth myself, I have seen that many other youths who do use the vape pens tend to be to be smoking cigarettes either of marijuana or tobacco. So I feel like there is a connection, and there needs to be something done. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's the only slips I have. I'm sure there's more people who would like to speak, so we'll start. I'm sorry, don't. It's okay.
I got lost. It's hard to find street signs in the dark. My name is Marilyn Rex. I represent actually two organizations tonight. I live in San Mateo County, not, I live in the city of San Mateo, actually, not in Brisbane. But I am the current chair of the Tobacco Education Coalition, which is the volunteer side of the tobacco prevention program in the county. I also represent the American Cancer Society on the Tobacco Education Coalition. So I am representing both, and I am a long-term volunteer for both of those organizations. I would encourage you very much to support this ordinance. I think it's extraordinarily important. We have made such success on the elimination and reduction of tobacco usage in this country. It's probably the most successful public health program that the country has ever run. It's taken us fifty years, fifty years, to get to this point. And we're never going to get to zero percent, but as the guy said, people are dying off. So, no pun intended. And I grew up in a household also with smokers. It killed them. It killed them. It killed my aunts. It killed my mother and dad. And that's part of the reason why I volunteer in this particular area. Please, please pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other members of the public who'd like to speak? Karen Cunningham?
Karen Cunningham, resident of Brisbane, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I have been an advocate for no smoking for many, many years. My parents smoked my entire life in a household where my windows were closed, the windows were closed in my cars, and, you know, many of the members of my family also died from smoking-related illnesses. That being said, I do believe that people have the freedom to choose to do whatever they want to do. But I also have the freedom to not smoke cigarettes, whether it's secondhand smoke or whatever. Been involved with this issue, and I appreciate all the work that you've done. One of the things that is somewhat troubling to me, even though I'm an avid anti-smoker, and if I had my druthers, I would say, nobody should smoke anywhere ever for any reason. But we have people who smoke, who choose to smoke, and it is not against the law to smoke, not against the law to vape, it's not against the law to do many things these days. But as an owner of a building, what are you going to do with people who choose to smoke? We can't just suddenly make a law that says there's no smoking in Brisbane, and all the people who are living in buildings in Brisbane who are smokers in buildings, the owners have to suddenly have this ordinance that says you have to impose upon the people who are living in your buildings that they cannot smoke. So what are you going to do with them? Are you going to kick them out? What are we going to do? Avid anti-smoker person here, and I think we should encourage non-smoking as we move forward. But I think, you know, making this cut, making a law, might not be the best way to go. So I sent, I sent an email to all of you today, and I spoke with all of you in the past as an avid anti-smoker, that, you know, maybe we have people make a choice. I own a rental building in this town, and I like the choice to who can rent my building. I think maybe that might be a good place for us to start, and we can move forward with that, that whoever owns a rental building in Brisbane can make that choice. And over time, we can move towards healthier choices. And you know what I do for a living? I teach people to live healthier choices, and I certainly don't encourage anybody to smoke anything. So maybe we can bring this ordinance in on multi-tiered levels, and maybe the first level is that, you know, if you own a rental building, that you make that choice. Your building is smoking or non-smoking. And the people who are smokers could choose to live in a smoking or a non-smoking building. And I think we should maybe tier it in. And I think you can make that decision tonight by saying, if you own a building, you can make it smoking, or you can make it non-smoking. And then we can readdress that maybe in six months or twelve months, and then move forward with that. I think some of the things that we do sometimes are so cut and hard that, you know, it's really offensive to one side or the other, and I'm not sure that's a great idea. So my thought would be that we adopt this ordinance, but we make a distinction that if you own a rental building, you get that choice. You own a building where people can smoke, or they can't. I hope that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to give members of the public who haven't spoken yet, first dibs. Michelle Salmon.
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. I also, you know, do not think smoking is good for you, and nicotine is a powerful drug. I know, because I was addicted to it for seventeen years, and I grew up in a family of smokers, and I was the only non-smoker. But that's my personal story. And that's what I'm here to talk about. Life is not risk-free. I saw on the county presentation the word "risk-free" several times. I'm sorry, life is not risk-free, and you could not legislate that. We have so many anti-stupidity laws already that shouldn't even have to be there. It should be a no-brainer that you put your safety belt on. It should be a no-brainer that you wear a helmet when you're riding a motorcycle or skateboarding. We shouldn't have to legislate those things. And it seems a little hypocritical to me that you want to legislate what people do in their own homes, but are not willing to enforce the use of helmets in a city-owned skate park. And you're willing to allow uses on the VWR property that is inconsistent with the toxic nature of the site. And you also had no concerns with the increase in diesel truck traffic to the residents in proximity to that site. Nor do we enforce the five-minute diesel idle law in Brisbane, even in areas near the schools. As a matter of fact, I was here at a meeting where one of our officers didn't even know that law was a California state law, or it didn't seem to. And, you know, we do nothing here about, except for a few citizens who call the airplane complaint noise line all the time, about the ill effects of jet exhaust, which we're exposed to all the time by the numerous flyovers. We don't do much about the amount of exhaust that comes off of Bay Shore and the lead contaminants that still exist along the transit corridors from when we had leaded gas. And, and yet, you're willing to legislate what people do in their own homes, be they own them or rent them. And I think that's crossing the line. Why don't we outlaw guns in Brisbane? There's certainly been a lot of shootings lately. Why don't we outlaw, oh, we've already outlawed tattoo parlors, and we've almost outlawed massage parlors. I mean, honest to God, this law goes over the limit with what you can legislate and what you can't legislate. So while I don't agree with smoking, and I, and I, there's a lot of parts of this law that are good, that I agree with, I think it goes way too far into public's, into people's rights. And I, I just kind of have a problem with that, and I don't think it's really enforceable. And you could have one cranky neighbor who wants to have a war with someone else and constantly be calling the police to complain about them. And, and what kind of, how, how is that? You know, how's that going to work? And how's it going to work when, which call is more important? The one about the dog barking, or the person smoking, or what, what's the police going, are we going to have even a larger police force to respond to this? I just see it's, it's a very slippery slope, and I don't, I think you've treated this as a witch hunt, and, and have gone too far. And medical marijuana? You're going to deny people medical marijuana to, you know, I mean, you, you are closing this meeting tonight in honor of Jane Kinsler, who fought cancer for twenty-six months of agony, and her only solace was medical marijuana in many, many cases. And you would deny that with this law if she lived in a multi-unit building? And it's interesting that the smoking statistics in Marin and San Mateo County are so low, because those are the counties with the highest median income in Sam, in, in the state of California. So I just think that, yeah, we need to have a law, you know, we need to have some legislation about secondhand smoke and smoking in public and that type of thing. And I just came from Japan where they are legislating a lot of that, and they have no smoking on the sidewalks except for designated areas, et cetera. And they have designated areas that are enclosed for people to go in and puff their little brains out, you know? But we don't have that. And, and I, I just think this really, it really goes too far. And I think you really need to take a step back. I know you guys all want to pass it, you know, but you need to take a step back and craft something that is positive and enforceable without creating this kind of situation that you're about to create. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? We'll start here.
I'd like to pass on to the intercession to the council.
Thank you.
My name is Pritam Sabrawal.
Yes, please address your comments further.
I have been doing tobacco research for the last forty-eight years. I have never seen a cell to be happy when we expose the cell to tobacco smoke. Every smoke of tobacco has seven thousand chemicals, and there's at least sixty-five to seventy chemicals which are known carcinogens. We are not talking about the rights of a child who's just born. We have to look at the bigger picture. It's not who owns the apartment and who does not own the apartment. It is not a financial matter. It's a matter of the life of a child who lives in this apartment building where mostly people are low-middle class. If they could afford a home, they'll be sitting in their own home. This question will not arise. But that child which is a month old, or a two-month old, or a six-month old, or a year-old, or five-year-old, does not have the right to say anything to this council. I'm here talking on behalf of those children who are suffering, and they cry, they do not want the smoke. They have no right. It is the right of a guy who is addicted to smoke, and even he does not know that he's doing that one, because it is also a low-middle-class tobacco smoker living in the same building. He will not do it intentionally, but he's doing it because he does not know that. The whole building is one-on-one heating-air conditioning system. You cannot separate departments. So would you kindly consider the plight of the child who has no defense? And it's that child who's taking these seven thousand chemicals. He's, or she is getting addicted to nicotine. When these children go up, they want to have great surge of nicotine. This is how they start with the tobacco. Then they start going with tobacco smoke, "God, oh, I'll become a movie star, I'll become rich." They don't. They get cancer. Ask me. All my friends who did not listen to me for so many years, they're underground, they're dead. All those who listened, ninety percent of them alive today, laughing with me. So it is a matter of who you help. It's not a financial matter, friends. It is a matter of your children, your grandchildren. Would you like to take your grandson, or granddaughter, and let them live in this apartment in the hole there? It's already hell for them. Poverty is no good. I was a homeless child myself. Do we want to continue looking at the politics of the whole world? Whether should I be afraid of this thing? Should I be afraid of this one? There should be no fear. We want to protect the life of the innocent, the child who has no defense. And I am speaking for them. You're all very smart people. I know you all. Please take the decision on behalf of the child without thinking about who's going to think I made this decision or their decision. Right decision is right decision. I was the one who was fighting for all issues of tobacco smoke, no smoking in the plains. I started that a long time ago. Nineteen seventy-six, I make the first law, and everybody told me I'll be shot. They tried to do it. I'm dead. No, I'm not dead. I'm alive. I'm still alive, and I'm on a new mission. New mission is, my mission is being discussed in Paris right now by two hundred presidents, how to reduce global warming. The only way we're going to do is solar panels, beautiful green places, butterflies, birds, even a bird will not like a smoke puff. I can tell you right now, a butterfly will die with a smoke puff. Take care of life, guys. This is a great opportunity for you guys to say, yes, all five of us, no more smoking in these places. These are the poor people who are suffering. We are all middle-class, upper-middle-class people. We have homes, everything. We don't have a problem. Please think for the poor. Think, think for the child. Thank you.
Thank you. Joel Diaz.
Thank you. Good evening, honorable council members, Madam Mayor. Joel Diaz, I just want to say that I do support some smoking regulation, and I do support the idea of some ordinance. I like a lot of the components, the basic components that address public areas. And I think that, you know, as a society, we need to move forward in that direction. I think when we get into troubles, when we start affecting what people do in their homes, and we start deciding about the abrogation of property use rights and the right to privacy, and those are constitutional rights. And when we start taking away people's constitutional rights to privacy, to property use, property rights, we think we need to be careful. We need to go slow. We should probably, those are very important to us for obvious reasons. And I think that what we need is, we need very thorough studies. We need more information. From what I see, and I've spent a lot of time looking at this stuff, is that a lot of these studies are inconclusive. The conclusions admit that they're inconclusive. The results identify problems with these studies. There's information missing on vaping. There's, there's no information presented on, on medical marijuana and what, and the effects of that in these situations. A really big glaring problem for me is that San Mateo County only just passed this twelve months ago. And so, and most of it hasn't been enacted. I think it takes fourteen months to enact, or to enforce it. And that's a problem. And so, and our ordinance is actually proposing more restrictions. And according to Sam Carr, there's already rumors of litigation circulating, circulating about that San Mateo County is going to be sued, there's other cities that are possibly going to be sued. There are also a lot of other cities, and obviously, we don't want to be sued, and we don't want to jump the gun on this stuff. And there are a lot of other cities that aren't including condominiums. And if, you know, I think it's, we have to be careful about not being arbitrary and capricious, and not doing things in a willful way, not doing things on a whim, not speeding things along in a hurry, especially when they're really important and they have to do with property rights and privacy rights. The, the condominiums at the Ridge have a separation, a one-hour fire and smoke separation between the units. They are sealed. There's no way for smoke to transfer from one unit to another. It can't go through the outlets, they're all caulked, fire-sealed, and draft stopped. So it doesn't make a lot of sense to include the Ridge and all those folks. I think the cheapest house at the Ridge right now just sold for almost eight hundred thousand dollars. These are a class of people that can regulate themselves. When they purchase homes, they are given disclosures. They know very well what they're doing. They have a chance to interview the neighbors, to find out. Furthermore, they have an HOA, and the HOA, as explained to us by a previous court case, can be sued. And it's the HOA's responsibility to take care of these nuisances within their HOA. But this condominium complex at the Ridge in Altamar have these one-hour fire and smoke separations. So these modern buildings seem to not fit the model of the idea that smoke can, secondhand smoke can transfer, migrate through walls. It does seem to make logical sense that it can happen in older buildings, and especially buildings that have shared heating and ventilation systems. The Ridge- The Ridge and Altamar do not have shared heating and ventilation systems. They have separate ventilation systems for each unit. So there's no danger of that. So it seems arbitrary to include them when they do not resemble the construction of these older multi-unit buildings. And there's been no study on that, no due diligence on that. And it seems to me that the due process that these people are entitled to, these condominium owners, has been ignored. And I think that's, that's also arbitrary and capricious. The, the study that the county has that shows, that proves the migration of secondhand smoke from unit to unit within an apartment building, a multi-unit building, admits in the study that they don't know the causes, like how that smoke gets around. It could be it's just through shared ventilation systems. Or it could be just in hallways, where people open up the door and all the smoke comes out into the hallway. Or it could be both of those factors. Or it could be that in a couple of cracks or something like that. And so, I think we really need to not be arbitrary, but actually figure it out one of these studies before you make a decision. And certainly don't include the Ridge that has a smoke separation, a one-hour smoke separation. They're designed to actually burn, contain a fire and a smoke, because smoke is what kills people, not the fire. The smoke will kill you first. And so, they're designed to burn for one full hour without transmitting smoke or fire. So it doesn't seem fair to do that with those folks. Seems better to have a more complete study that identifies the causality of why smoke migrates. Certainly don't have any studies on if vaping migrates. And if vaping actually helps people quit smoking and maybe saves their lives, it doesn't seem logical to discourage them from vaping. It seems to me that if you were going to ban smoking in some apartments or multi-unit houses, that maybe you should allow vaping. Because if the person has a choice of going outside to smoke, or maybe vape inside, maybe they're going to vape instead. Maybe that'll help them quit smoking. Maybe it'll help them save their lives. Let me just find my, my notes here. So I think the ordinance, I think we need to go back. I think we need to look at some of these studies. I think the one that shows that, the county gave us a study, showed a study where single-family, children from single-family homes versus children in multi-unit housing have higher biomarkers of cotinine levels in their systems. And that sounds pretty conclusive, like, wow, jeez. So people in apartments have higher exposure to, to secondhand smoke. But if you read the study thoroughly, and I didn't hear anybody mention it, that, that's actually not the conclusion. The conclusion is, is that, yes, for some people, blacks and whites, Hispanics and other people seem to be immune and had much lower biomarkers in their systems. And we know that, you know, they don't have any special powers. They're in these units being exposed allegedly to the secondhand smoke. And for some reason, it didn't get in their systems. It only got in black and white people's systems. And so, that kind of clues me into the idea that maybe there's something wrong with that study. It's the one of two studies that I saw the county produce. We don't have any more studies. The study itself admits there's problems with it. It admits that there needs to be more scientific evidence. It admits that there's a problem, that they had to weight this thing and control it by ethnicity, because that's the only way they could support their hypothesis, that there was more risk to exposure in attached housing than detached housing. That was the only way they could support their hypothesis, was to control it by ethnicity. Because some ethnicities didn't show any difference at all. And that's odd, because, you know, if, if one person is affected, why isn't the other person? And so, what they said was, it's possible that maybe these people are picking up the cotinine from someplace else. Maybe they're, they're getting it on their, on the surface of their hands, from their used cars. They also suggested that the size of the apartment itself could have something to do with it versus a very large home. That maybe you'll come in more contact with stuff. If one of the people in the house smokes, but they smoke outside, but they come in, it's on their clothes, it's on the couch, there's no place for the person to escape, so they rub into it and they get it on themselves. And that's a possibility. The study says that. So it's very inconclusive. And it doesn't seem fair for us to base the decision on this and take away property use rights when it's a very vague study. That also seems arbitrary and capricious to make determinations based on vague information. The, I, I think that the ordinance is good, except for where, where it reaches into private property and use rights. I think it has to, we have to slow down. I think we should, like Karen said, it could be a tiered level. You know, maybe let's adopt the things that address the public situations, the things that aren't, don't seem very contentious. And then maybe let's get some more information and look at some of these studies and other studies. A lot of these studies are very old, from two thousand ten, two thousand six, and earlier. And it's two thousand fifteen. Maybe we should get some more recent information before we start taking away private property use rights and, and privacy rights. Maybe we could do this in two, two sections. So I'd like to see the ordinance amended to take out the parts that address attached housing and people's homes. You know, if you're going to leave in the apartments, let's, let's maybe take out the condos that have one-hour fire separations, that don't have shared ventilation systems. Let's take those folks out. It's not fair to include them. It's just arbitrary. They're, they're not affected by this. There are, there's, there's a part in the, the, in the ordinance that says, in one of the warehouses, that says, smoking is not a constitutional right. And I think that should be taken out too, because obviously, it's not a constitutional right. Smoking is not a constitutional right. Obviously, it's not. It's, and it's, it's insulting and it's embarrassing. I mean, as a city that we would craft an ordinance that says that. The constitutional rights that are possibly being abrogated here are property use rights, Fifth Amendment rights, Fourth Amendment rights to privacy. Those are the rights that we're considering taking away. Those are the rights that we are concerned about, these people that are asking you to slow down on this thing. The, the fact that the council agreed to have a special meeting to sort of speed up this process, also kind of a whim, like, kind of very willful. And it was to accommodate a council member. And I can see how that's fair to the council member, but it doesn't seem very fair to the citizens and our interests. And, you know, the council's job is to represent the interests of its constituency and the citizens. And I know it's a nice gesture to, to do this for the council member, but really, the, the obligation is to the citizens and the constituency and to give us time, or give us our due process. Don't rush through this. Don't take away our constitutional rights in a hurry. Let's, let's kind of just slow down on that a little bit and make sure we have all of the information. So I'd like to see that part taken out of the ordinance, ordinance, please. Because I just feel it's embarrassing. It's not in the county ordinance. It's, it's, I think it's, it's insulting. I think it's, it's kind of trying to make a point. And I, I don't think it's valid. And then, and then another, the, my final point, which I, I feel is also, just an example of, of being caprice or arbitrary, is deciding not to include certain attached housing. So we're ostensibly including duplexes. And any house in Brisbane that has a second unit that didn't obtain a secondary dwelling unit permit, as I understand it, is defined as a duplex by the planning department. So all of those houses, the older ones, the majority of them are duplexes. I own one. And only the newer ones with a secondary dwelling permit are going to be exempt. Yet they have very similar construction. The transmission ostensibly of smoke could happen in either building, according to what we're hearing here. And it doesn't seem fair. You can literally have a duplex and then your neighbor has an in-law. And you, the, the person in the duplex cannot smoke inside, but the next-door neighbor can. Exactly the same type of construction. Both tenants, they both have tenants. A policeman can come and give one a ticket. The other one does not get a ticket. So that seems very arbitrary. It seems very unfair. Just some people are being restricted and others are not. Some people are losing their property use rights. And a lease or a tenant is a form of ownership. It's a temporary ownership of property use right. And that's protected under the Constitution. And so, some tenants are being unfairly picked on and some are not, based on a planning designation. One's called a single-family home, the other one's called a duplex. Yet they're right next to each other, side by side, all throughout town. So that seems very arbitrary. So I think we should really look at that and decide, you know, you got to be fair. And if the goal is to protect people from secondhand smoke, to save the children, to save people's lives, right? You know, maybe you should include single-family homes too. But I suspect the reason why we don't include single-family homes in the county and the state is because people would not take it. They would freak out. And they would want heads. And so, that's why we're not including single-family homes. We're just including the people that can't really stick up for themselves, which are the smaller segments of the population. Yet according, and if we looked at the data, according to the CDC, there are more people at risk in single-family homes to secondhand smoke than there are in multi-unit housing. Almost twice as much. If you look, the, the CDC says that twenty percent of people that own are, are at risk of secondhand smoke. People that rent, it's thirty-seven percent. Well, that's a bigger number. People that rent, that's thirty-seven percent. People that own, twenty percent. It's a bigger number. But if you look at Brisbane, we know that there's four times as many homes, people that own than rent. So that's about fifteen hundred homes in Brisbane. Twenty percent of that is three hundred people. A third of four hundred apartments is, is what? Hundred and, somebody help me with math, hundred and thirty-five, hundred and fifty? It's basically twice as many people, three hundred to a hundred and fifty. Twice as many people are in danger, in risk to secondhand smoke in single-family homes than apartments. So if we're going to be righteous and save the world and save all these people, we really, if you want to be fair and you don't want to be arbitrary and you want to take away people's property rights, you really should try to, you should do it to the single-family homes as well. And, and, but I think that obviously, nobody's going to stand for that. But if you, if you really want to save lives, that's where you would do it, if any of this data is true and bears out. And we really don't even know if it does. But those people smoking in those homes are hurting the people that live with them. And nobody's doing anything about that. Or even suggesting to do anything about that. So there's a real lot of consideration that is not happening here. This is moving very quickly. There's a lot of data that's missing. The San Mateo County ordinance that this is modeled after is only twelve months old and has not actually taken effect. It's a lot of problems. And I would ask that you please just slow down and take a, take a deeper look at this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I've got one person who hasn't spoken yet. Renee, if you'd like to come up. And then, then we'll go back through the people who have already spoken.
Good evening. Renee Marmian, oh, resident of Brisbane. This has been very interesting, very educational, of all, all the aspects of smoke. I come from a single homeowner at one dime, and now I'm in a multi-unit. I kind of agree with Joel that if you're going to be fair, ban it all across Brisbane. Because as a single-family homeowner, a neighbor next to me, would always go outside and smoke on his deck. And I had my windows open, I got the smoke all the time. I'd just go close my window and that'd be it. In the multi-unit I'm in, I've had no problems. So I really feel like when you just put on this ordinance, multi-unit dwellers, it's, it's almost penalizing them. So if you really want to be fair, yeah, ban it across everybody. Because then everybody in Brisbane can't smoke. And then it includes, like I said, everybody. And I know you'll do the greater good of all your residents. So good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Tony, you wanted to speak again.
Thank you. Tony Varios. I understand the emotional appeals on both sides of this issue very well, because I share many of those same experiences, growing up in a household of a mother and father who smoked and almost every other adult in presence smoked whenever there were parties, anything else. That was a matter of the times. The times have changed. And now, we've heard some interesting comments tonight. One of them was that, why don't we change the rule a little bit so that a rental property owner can decide whether or not their unit should be all smoking or all non-smoking? Now, of course, today, they already have a right to do that, as it is. If we pass this ordinance, they will not have that right to designate their building as a smoking building. But they would have a right if the building were configured in a way to allow them to designate a smoking area that didn't break the rule. They could do that. And that wouldn't be a problem for anybody. The suggestion that we can have a tiered approach is inconsistent with laws in the United States of America. They generally aren't passed that way. They generally aren't written that way, because they can't be enforced that way in general. That's just, my understanding, it's just generally not done that way. The idea here is not to penalize smokers. That was made clear from the county's perspective and everybody else that I've heard speak all the way through. It's not an anti-smoking thing. It's a breathe-clean-air thing for those of us who would prefer to not breathe secondhand smoke. So what's unfair about that? And all the, the suggestion that, well, if you're going to ban it here, you should ban it everywhere. And the reason you're not doing that is because you don't have the guts to take on single-family homeowners who would object to it. I think that's a complete misstatement of the, the politics of this country and the facts. Sure, everybody wants to protect their private property rights. I do as much as anybody else does. But that's not the issue. The issue was, as it was presented by the county and the preponderance of the research that I read, I don't know if all of you had an opportunity to read the copious notes that were presented by the subcommittee and the city attorney. I saw a, a copy from San Francisco, where they've done extensive studies from the Department of Health. And they had a ten-page report that they put out, which I forwarded to all of you. I don't know if you had a chance to read it. But there were a number of studies in there that were cited, not just a couple. And they weren't all old studies either. There was the most current information that San Francisco could get their hands on. They looked at it and they said, one of the statements that they made in their decision to enforce their no-smoking ordinance there, is they said, we want to err essentially on the side of being conservative. We don't want to wait another thirty to fifty years of lying tobacco companies telling us that, you know, cigarettes are fine, it's just steam. We don't want to wait thirty or forty years for the science to catch up and prove what anybody with any common sense could already figure out. You just can't prove it, but you know it's true. Now, there was another statement made that I take objection with, that all five city council members have already got their minds made up and want to jam this thing through like it was highway to hell. I don't believe that's true. I don't believe that ever was true from the beginning to now. I think people, all of you have proven your abilities in the past to keep an open mind, weigh the, the factors involved and make the best informed decision that you can, as opposed to making your mind up in advance and then trying to make all the facts, facts fit your personal opinion. I think that's insulting to all of you. I don't think that's what you do. And I don't think it's fair to suggest that you do that. It's insulting to me to have to sit here and listen to that, as far as I'm concerned. The suggestion, then, there were a bunch of statements made that are opinions masquerading as facts, as opposed to the doctor who got up here and told you what his medical experience has informed him and Dr. Liu, who did the same thing. And this was multiple meetings. This is not one or two meetings and bam, let's go to the moon. This is a number of meetings that have been held now. A whole bunch of people are probably watching us at home. I don't know the statistics. Maybe, maybe the city manager or somebody else could suggest to you how many residents of Brisbane watch on Channel twenty-seven, I think it is? I don't have cable. I don't watch it. So I have to come down here and see you in person. So I don't know how many people are paying attention to this. But I do know that it hasn't been something that the city attorney, the city manager, the city- been something that the city attorney, the city manager, the city council, or anybody has tried to slip by somebody and hide it from the public. We do know for a fact that the county mentioned the statistics, and Ms. Scruggs' presentation tonight was a whole lot more comprehensive than the first one. It answered and, and, and responded to all the questions that I recall that different city council members had, and they were reasonable questions. They've all been answered in the affirmative. And so to suggest that it's being rushed, I think is outrageous. It's not being rushed. When you've got 20 cities in San Mateo County, and you're the only one that's not dead last in doing something about protecting public health, how is that rushing anything? You tell me. You feel good about that? I wouldn't feel good about that. If I was sitting where you are right now, I'd be speaking more like Councilman Miller had, uh, at the last city council meeting, where he said, "It's a moral imperative." What's your problem? What does it take? So we're gonna sit there and wait, and little Brisbane is gonna, uh, commission a $50 million medical study with the CDC to prove that this stuff is as bad as tobacco? And that marijuana smoke is as bad as tobacco? Well, the facts are already there. It's just a matter of, do you wanna read them? Do you wanna accept them? Or do you wanna deny them? Denial is one of the biggest things in a human mind's capacity to do. You can deny anything. And once you make up your mind that it's gonna be that way, nobody can change your mind. Now, let's go to viewpoint at the ridge, the condos. We already know that this doesn't impact Landmark and the Toll Brothers-built houses, because they're single-family dwellings. We already know that most of Brisbane's single-family dwellings, and it doesn't apply to them. So that's not a problem. We're talking about apartment buildings, and we're talking about condos. We're talking about Altamar, we're talking about the condos across the street from the park, the condos up on San Bruno Avenue. There's a number of them that have five or 10 units in them. We're talking about the condos where I live, the townhomes where I live, that, uh, we just heard a false statement, I'm sure was well-meant, about these buildings being built with a one-hour firewall that will prevent the smoke from passing next door. Now, yes, it's true that they have a one-hour firewall there. That's fact. But it's also a fact that the person that made that statement's probably never been in any of them and looked and inspected any of those firewalls, see how many holes are in them. And I don't think any of you have. Have you? No. Well, I have, and I live in one. And the one that I live in had more holes in it, in the firewalls, than you could count. And if you were aware of it, as I tried to make some of you aware of it years ago, hopefully you would've taken some action to do something about it, and get those people on that condo association board to fix it, like they should have many years ago. But they didn't fix it, and they wouldn't have fixed it if they didn't find themselves in the most unfortunate position of having major construction defects that they couldn't ignore. And in the course of dealing with those things that they couldn't ignore, I forced them to deal with the ones in my unit that I was aware of, that they didn't care about. So when you can put your hand through the firewall, through a hole, and you can play with the insulation, and you can feel the air flowing up from the basement, then you tell me that that smoke can't get through there. And you tell me that that's a one-hour firewall, and we don't have to worry about the fire or the smoke going next door, and I'll tell you, you're a fool. Now, let's say that that's all been fixed now, because we did spend $13 million to fix it, along with the rats and everything else. What's that doing about my balcony and the smoke going from next door to my balcony? It's not doing anything about that. And I've said before, I have some nice neighbors who smoke next to me. We're in a three-unit building, there's one roof that covers three units, even though they have independent firewalls in between them, that's, that's a safety feature. But it's one building with three units. The other buildings have three units like mine, or they have up to five units. They're all built the same way. Well, my neighbors are really nice people, the women don't like smoking in their house, so they throw the men outside. They tell them to go outside and smoke in the front. And they, um, comply. They do that. Unfortunately, they're nice enough people that they don't come walking in front of my entryway when the wind's blowing in, when I want fresh air blowing through my house, I'll open the front door, I'll open the back door, and let the wind blow through Hawaiian style. And they don't sit in front of my entryway smoking away. If they did, I would have to go outside and ask them to please move further away, so I don't get all that smoke in my house. But they're considerate people, and that's good. And that gets to the key of why, other than public protection, what this whole ordinance is about. Here, all kinds of nonsense, taking away private property rights. Well, there's a whole bunch, there's a whole long list of things that you can't do in your house right now, based on federal, state, and county, and city laws. A long list of things you can't do in your own private, single-family home, or a condo, or a townhome, or anywhere else. And I don't think you need to stretch your imagination a whole lot to figure out what's on that list without, you know, that I don't have to run it down here and waste your time telling you. Think about it. Well, so, what, what's it really all about? It's about breathing clean air. And it's about not imposing your will to smoke vape or smoke medical marijuana on anybody, like me, some 80-year-old who may have respiratory illness, or some child, anybody who just doesn't want it. They can't move away from it. You can move away from them. And the key here, again, is not taking away people's rights to smoke all they want, chain smoke all you want for your whole life, vape your head all, all to whatever you wanna do, whether it's bubble gum or marijuana you wanna vape, we don't care, do whatever you wanna do. Uh, and, and, and the last one is medical marijuana. You wanna smoke that stuff? 'Cause you think that's the only thing that's gonna ease your pain as you're dying? You know, we are all compassionate enough to understand that, and, uh, I don't think I know anybody in this town that's so mean and cruel that they would pick up the phone and call the county or the city and, and complain because their neighbor next door is dying, and they don't wanna smoke, they don't wanna smell that marijuana smoke for the next two months while the person's dying. Uh, personally, I know I wouldn't make that call, even though I have a legal right to make that call, if this thought, if this ordinance was passed with that provision in it. Uh, Councilman Lance mentioned the idea, well, what if you had an apartment building that has 10 units, and all 10 of the people smoke in there? You pass this ordinance, and they're not supposed to smoke in their unit anymore? Well, if they all decide they wanna smoke anyway, and their landlord's not on their case about it, and their next-door neighbors aren't on their case about it, and nobody's complaining about it, they can do it. You're right, they're breaking the law. But nobody would really care about that if it's not bothering anybody. Similarly, in my, as I mentioned, if somebody's smoking medical marijuana next to me, I'm not gonna pick up the phone and complain about that when this person's dying in the next six months or so. Well, I am concerned about somebody who says they have a bad back, or their leg hurts, or their neck hurts. I got a stiff neck right now. Should I light up a joint right here? I don't think so. Um, you know, and then, and then, I don't wanna sit there and live next to that person who uses a medical excuse for next 20 years. And that's impacting my property rights, my property values. And I can't do anything about it. Under the current situation, we don't have any ability to do anything about that. Now, yeah, I can complain to my homeowners' association, that was another red herring. The law, uh, the lawsuit that, um, the city attorney mentioned, I'm not familiar with, uh, I'm not sure if that was one that I referred to her, or where that one came from, because I see a lot of these things in my line of work as an insurance broker. But regardless of the case, somebody sued, they won. Well, you know, people, most people don't just sue at the drop of a hat, even in California. It costs money. People who are rich, have a lot of money, don't care, yeah, they can, they can sue. But most people don't like to, and they don't wanna be suing their, their homeowners' association in particular. I'll wrap it up right now. Suing is not the answer. And in this case, we can't depend on a homeowners' association to enforce the basic rules that are in their CCNRs now. You can't expect them to deal with this. So, uh, I, I hope very much that you will consider all this and put aside all the nonsense. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Cunningham.
Karen Cunningham, thanks, Madam Mayor, City Council. I just wanna read a very short excerpt from San Mateo County, October 7th, 2015. "Whether it's traditional tobacco, medical marijuana, or the increasingly popular electronic cigarette cigarettes, San Mateo City Council is seeking to enact stricter regulations to deter unwanted exposure to secondhand smoke." October 7th, 2015. "But while various cities throughout the region have also proceeded with stricter smoking bans, the San Mateo City Council opted to set itself apart from others in the county by introducing an ordinance that would impact sellers of e-cigarettes, who could be required to obtain a tobacco retail permit." Might be a good thought for us, too. "On Monday, the San Mateo City Council unanimously agreed to enact an ordinance preventing cigarette smoke in multifamily apartments and condominiums, forbids medical marijuana from being smoked in public places, and incorporates vapor products by expanding the law's definition to include both tobacco and nicotine products." The ordinance, uh, in effect triggered by apartment residents who've attended meetings with pleas for more restrictive regulations, will go, in fact, in 30 days. So that's pretty soon. Uh, "The new prohibit, uh, prohibit, prohibitions include a ban on smoking tobacco cigarettes, not medical marijuana, marijuana, in multifamily residences, as well as common areas. However, it excludes single-family homes with secondary units. It also bans any type of smoking in lagoons and waterways, on city-owned or leased properties such as parks, as well as surrounding sidewalks and streets, and in areas where people have to wait in line such as trains and ATMs, et cetera." "I'm extremely proud of this initiative to protect the citizens from the health hazards presented by secondary smoke. Involuntary exposure to known toxins and carcinogens from secondhand smoke is unacceptable, especially to our children. While I respect an individual's right to smoke, that right should not result in negative and dangerous health consequences for others." Mayor Maureen Fraschay wrote in an email, "I am particularly thrilled that San Mateo, um, will be a trendsetter in regulating the sale of e-cigarettes." It goes on and on and on, I'll read the last paragraph. "Although e-cigarettes has been touted by the industry as a safer alternative to traditional cigarettes, the city is considering changing its tobacco retail permit to include nicotine products, meaning sellers of e-cigarettes or vapor products would be required to maintain a retail permit issued by the county's Environmental Health Division. For retailers who both sell, only one permit would be required." I, maybe we should take a look at that. I think it's pretty good. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
I won't bother you anymore.
Michelle, would you like to speak again?
Michelle Sammon, Brisbane resident, I actually don't wanna speak again. I'd like to hear what the police chief has to say about enforcement for both the best-case scenario and the worst-case scenario, um, with that ordinance as it stands, since she will be the person responsible for overseeing the enforcement. And you started to ask the question earlier, Clark, but we got sidetracked with the education enforcement that the county is willing to support if somebody calls them, which is way different than calling the 911 or 4671212 and saying, "Hey, my neighbor's smoking." So, I'd like to hear from the police chief, actually, before you make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Wicke, please.
Thank you. So, one, I wanted to submit for the record the studies and my, where my comments came from. I've highlighted, um, those areas and the studies from the county, and also the CDC, so I just wanna submit that. Where would I give that to?
To Sherry.
All right. I would just ask that those be made part of the minutes. I know we're starting to paraphrase the minutes now, and I'd like to have those specific comments in there, if possible. Just would appreciate rebutting some of the comments made, and I don't want this to be a debate, you know? It's not about that. And none of us are experts, um, that you should rely on. And, um, we, our opinions are important, and we have rights, but, but we're not experts. And that's kind of the crux of what I'm saying, is that we need to really get more expert opinion on this stuff. The one-hour separations do exist, and you can check with the building department, you know, are there, are there holes? Sure, they're sealed, all the, any outlets, those types of things. And there are ways to test them, and engine, there are engineering methods, and they're tested all the time, and they can be impervious. Can they be flawed? Sure, you know? But can they be fixed? Yes, very easily. And so if there's a problem, the owner should address that with the HOA. So, you know, their opinion that there's a problem, air coming through the foundation, you know, the separation goes all the way down through the crawl space. So there should be air coming through your crawl space, through your, if you have a heating vent coming up through the floor, and you put your hand on it. I've sold a lot of houses there, I've been in them, I know what he's talking about. You should feel air, 'cause the separation goes all the way down to the foundation. So that's open underneath your unit, but it doesn't go to the other unit. The, the, um, you know, no, the doctors' opinions that have been put forth here, nobody's arguing that secondhand smoke isn't harmful. That's, that's obvious. Everybody agrees with that. Nobody's arguing that point. The, um, and nobody's saying you can't take away people's property rights, you know? If they impinge on other people's rights, well, then, yeah, you certainly can. And I'm well aware of that, and many other people are well aware of that. But if you're gonna take away those rights, and maybe there's good reason to do it, I'm just saying we should go a little bit slower. In the interests of the people and your constituency, should really be thorough about this, before we go take away people's constitutional rights. Because once we start taking away those rights, the only, the only thing between us and a total totalitarian regime is just a matter of time. And I think Ayn Rand said that. And it's just, it's, once you start taking away those rights, it's just a matter of time. And so, yes, you may have to take some away, but let's go slow. It's important to go slow. It took a long, hard fight, and blood, and treasure to win those rights. So we shouldn't give them up easily. I agree with Michelle, I would love to hear from the police department. I didn't see anything anywhere in there, any written opinion from law enforcement about this ordinance. And they seem to be an expert to me. I would, I would really like to hear from them. What is their opinion of this ordinance? Not so much the enforcement of it, but what's their overall opinion? Is this necessary? Is this something we should do? From their perspective, is this something we should do? Condos, again, are exempt in many other cities, and there's reason for that. I suspect it has to do with the one-hour separations. Some of them are not, they're, they're condo conversions. The one that caused this whole, uh, case, Seraphina, lives in her mother-in-law's condo, and she rents it from her down at Joy, and that's an apartment building that was converted. And it doesn't have those separations. Um, you know, can people smoke on their decks? They can in single-family homes, you know? In San Francisco, I think there's an ordinance that you can't be within 30 feet of a window, you know? So you could address it that way. You could make a specific part of the ordinance that addresses smoking on your deck. Because, you know, it could waft into people's houses. Those are my comments, and thank you very much.
Thank you. So, okay, um, I'll, I'll give you one more shot, if you'd like to make a quick comment, follow-up.
A very quick comment. I think it was very nice for us to hear all those things, but it's time for this council to take a bold action. And please, make a move, make a decision. We'd like to see, what do you think about the health of a child? Nobody's talking about the health of a child here. Everybody, property owner, can talk about property owner, property dealer, talking about property rights and all that. And then they talk about the constitutional right. What about the constitutional right of a child who cannot speak, cannot say anything, and he or she is continuously being insulted? That is not right. Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, I would like to take a five-minute break, and then we can hear from staff and have discussion among the council, if that's okay with the council.
Good.
So, I'd like to take a five-minute break.